This call will be recorded.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the House Education Human Services Committee. Call for regular meeting May nineteen twenty twenty five. Honorable Alina Nizagay. Honorable Nizagay did not answer roll call. Honorable Jim Sargeant.
Honorable James President.
Honorable Jim Sargeant answered roll call. Honorable Dr. Andy Ness. Honorable Dr. Andy Ness answered roll call. Honorable Jermaine Simonton present. Honorable Jermaine Simonton answered roll call. Honorable George Pope.
I'm here.
Honorable George Pope answered roll call. Honorable Curtis Amico.
Here.
Honorable Curtis Amico answered roll call. Mr. Chair, you have five members present, one absent, and two could pardon yourself.
Thank you very much. So with that, we do have five committee members. All right, we'll move on to the presentation. And with that, Mr. Donald, can you make some information?
There are very few. I would say there's just one. There's one. Good morning. Now, I gave a word to the agenda so that we give our regards. And our provisions today. And you know, our masterful committee, the people who gave us the spring. And then three members, they shall be present. All staff, the officers, and the judges. And that's the best way to describe it. And we're heading to the community right here. We have people, families, and so that they're protected. They're all doing very well, and you know, so. So the three of our jobs and the nine of our children. Now, let's speak with the other four of your work. It is behind me.
Janet, thank you very much. And for that, many members. One once, one of all. Just to inform the committee. Two days ago, I received a call from the chair from through his house. And I go here. Well, the president was happy. And those who were there. The chair does. She said, oh, it's soon. So my son did this. Anyway, it came to me. I see. But he saw. He works for the. And there. It is awesome.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Many years, are there any other additional announcements? We once, we twice, or three times, or four times. So with that, I'm moving out to end your computer. Again, again, official. Again, good morning, committee members, staff, speaker staff. Thank you for being here. Those that are on the call or online, I think you know, for it was not enough this morning. I'd like to recognize everyone this morning here at our competition human service committee. Yeah, thank you. So with that, there's no others. Let's move on to the next line, which is three reviewing Dr. Agenda. Yeah.
Yes, um, the chair, you have your proposed agenda for the health education human service training. And now we teach meeting May nineteen twenty seven five AM. Designed by honorable James James. This is me on your very current. Today, the project finance conference here. We have to complete and do a lot of things in order to go on that. One call, we need to order roll call presentation. And I'm supposed to do the three reviewing our. Or receive the doctor's note from head on for review. It's twenty five, and we're going to be. We don't want to turn it into five as a section eight. Five reports, A is the report that said was now looked back at. Division project, if there's any report. So we got the address of our staff, Mr. Sher Walker, program manager. These are seven. Post six, open seven, seven, new business, A registration zero zero seven eight seven twenty five. B is legislation number zero zero eight seven five. C is registration number zero zero eight four twenty five. And D is registration number zero zero eight seven eight twenty five. E is scheduled proposed by the case from the Health Education Services Committee. We're switching with Natalie Headstark. And two select are committed in meeting day. This is the program. Yes, it was scheduled meeting. We had to discuss it by Monday. This is what I recommend, leading these students in health. Eight closing meetings, and now this is adjournment. And the following meetings and travel are in our list as well.
Okay, Janet, thank you for that. So committee members, do you have another motion? Motion made by Honorable George Pope, second Honorable Vice Chair Jermaine Simonton. Committee members, are there any corrections to add on the revision to the agenda? Honorable Pope. A request for approval of the rich bill. It took. And now. Alina, Honorable Dr. Andy Ness, the G. Call, call, Alina. So what is it now? Hope you don't make several idea. For tomorrow, put on the agenda. Okay. Okay. That's not. About the twenty two on three twenty four. The events in the company. There is only twenty two coming back separately. Ah, the edition. I don't want to watch it. Uh, not the work session with the veteran advisory council. And the general terms of this meeting. So I think. I have that. I want to session. I think longer. But it's a problem. It's a check. Okay, Janet, thank you, Honorable Pope. Committee members, I've been requested to add on the new business. And she tried to request the Ridgefield School. And that will be May twenty second, May twenty third, May twenty fourth. Under H, we have a board session. Um, scheduled propose proposal was veterans advisory committee that we under H. As new business. Vice Chair, you have that?
Mm hmm.
Okay. So with that, are there any others? Committee members, any amendments to the agenda? If not, then once. Okay, so is it, Mr. Noll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Ridgefield School, is that their graduation?
No.
Is that the graduation? Oh, the twenty third, fifty seven. Thank you.
All right, so with that, real quickly, Mr. Noll, is that a read? And we can go to the table.
Okay, the chair, I have two items that I've amended to the agenda. And we have under new business. Under G, is the travel request to Ridgefield School regarding their graduation. The decision of their graduation. And travel dates that we made coming that issue from the board. And A, under the change agreement, to add a work session with the Veterans Advisory Council and to select the dates for that particular. Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so with that, we have a vote, Honorable Amico.
Honorable Green.
Honorable Pope.
Green.
Honorable Dr. Niz.
Green.
Honorable Vice Chair.
Green.
With that, we have four in favor, zero opposed, and two not voting. And that creates a chair and excuse Honorable Dr. Niz again. Forward, reviewing Dr. Journals. Again, it's one April twenty eighth, twenty seventy five, regular meeting, April thirty. Twenty twenty five, official meeting. Committee members, grabbing motion to the second panel. Motion made by Honorable George Pope, and second by Honorable Curtis Amico. Committee members, if I read any questions pertaining to the two journals, April twenty eighth and April forty. One once, one twice, twenty three times, Honorable Amico, Honorable Amico. Honorable Dr. Niz, Honorable Vice Chair.
Green.
With that, we have four in favor, zero opposed, and two not voting, and a petition. So with that, moving on to agenda number five. A, the report, something is now moving back to the education intervention program. Annual report presented by Mr. George Nance, program specialist, and also Mr. Persia Park, program manager. Mr. President. Uh, Jimmy, Peter Nace. Okay, so with that, we're going to have Mr. Peter Nace here. Um, we. We. We don't have any hard copy of the presentation. So with that, one door, maybe twenty minutes will go at the beginning. Mr. Peter Nace, you have committee rules. By the end of that twenty minutes, you can back to the report. After that, after the completion of your twenty minutes, I will ask for a motion and a second. There will be a question, if there's any question, you can add it to your report. Um, I believe staff did receive a hard copy of the presentation. So your twenty minutes to get down, Mr. Nish. Before you.
Good morning, Chair, Mr. Rich James, and committee members. And your staff as well. Can't can't leave out the staff because they're the one that makes things happen a lot of times. But I appreciate being here today. We drove them from Winslow up in the north, you know, Winslow there to attend this meeting. But we're very excited to be here. Thank you for allowing us to present with today, this morning, to the committee members and winters and staff. And just wanted to do an update on our program. I'm not sure how we want to get started. You want to. You know, there's a good and bad to everything that we experience out of the office. First of all, I represent the Black Hill Center for American Ended Health out of the city of South Dakota. We have an office in Winslow, the Southwest National Tobacco Education Prevention Project. And in the office there in Winslow, we've been in Winslow since two thousand and five. So we've been doing this sort of advocacy work for the last twenty years. And in this case, it's very much been very. Uh, you know, it's a very been a very humbling experience. Having to address a lot of these, you know, activities that we go about doing on a daily basis. And in this case, you know, it's something that we go into the same as you are do here. You know, we found a way to get this information out to communities. As a community-based organization, we try to do all, everything in our part to, you know, do. Do the due diligence in the case of, you know, sharing information about the danger of natural tobacco and other nicotine products that are on the market. In this case, maybe what we could do is I put this group work in such an order for. See how we could very much go through all these documents that I have provided. And the documents that I provided here, you know, maybe what we could do is on the right side of the, you know, on the right side of the files. I've included the Arizona Life, Mr. Bailey, uh, two thousand and twenty five championship award document that I imposed, including a press release set without with it. And we've been asked to share this press release to the level of different Navajo Nation governments, including the legislative branch, the office of the president and the vice president, as well as the Department of Justice. In an effort to get this information out that the Navajo Nation was was recognized in Washington DC on May eighth. And it was, it was by the Campaign for Tobacco Free Kids. The tobacco, the Campaign for Tobacco Free Kids is a national organization that is located in Washington DC. On this particular day of May the eighth, at the Smithsonian Institute, Arizona Life and the Navajo Nation was recognized as champions of global advocacy. So it's a local, global award that very much is something that we wanted to share with the committee here. And in this case, you know, we've also included the Navajo Nation in this recognition. And we had Honorable Carl Flader attend this meeting as well as the Washington office staff there. And it was recognized, and you begin to see it being put out there. You know, right now, the Campaign for Tobacco Free Kids has it on their website. Uh, you know, including other entities here on Navajo. The Department of Health is wanting to put it on their website. Uh, you know, the Department of Education is also wanting to put this on their website just to recognition. And I feel like the twenty years of work that we've been doing out of the Southwest Navajo Tobacco Education Prevention Project is until twenty years later that we go back to. And it's all because of the effort that took place, including the Arizona Act in two thousand and twenty one, and then the tobacco tax increase in two thousand and twenty four. So the advocacy is is being recognized, the advocacy group, including the members of the Navajo Nation. So in that, you know, feel like, you know, we've come and made presentations here to the test committee in the past over the years, working with the different Navajo Nation council. I believe that we started in two thousand, the nineteen Navajo Nation Council and so forth, nineteen, twenty, twenty one. And, you know, all the way to here, twenty five. So that's twenty years that we've been doing this to get recognized. Feel like the world beginning to recognize is that the type of advocacy that is coming here. And that's one of the things that we wanted to highlight. And, you know, you guys could, you know, take credit for it. That's what we've been telling people. The only thing that we're doing is to share the information of the partners that we develop over the years. That includes this committee here, as well as the Navajo Nation Council, and, you know, the executive branch and the judicial branch. So that's the information that I wanted to share with you. I feel like, you know, we need to take a break and sometimes recognize just the work that is being done out of Navajo. There's always kids, you know, attended it or achieved it. But change, but other box, you know. Maybe when we're all done, that we'll be able to see that, you know, we left the nation in better hands for our children to live in, including the families that are raising them. So I just wanted to share that information first of all. And then right after that, I also included just the work of the council here in the package of the tobacco tax increase that took place. And in it, you know, we've included, we also included two more information on other. And in it, you know, uh, we've included, uh, we also, uh, included two, uh, more information on other sorts of nicotine products that are. That weren't on the Navajo Nation code, so that includes, uh, electronic cigarettes and vaping devices. Uh, vaping devices is very, uh, new in the market, but it's very much, uh, penetrated every, uh. Territory across, uh, the United States and all over the world. There's only nine, uh, nine, uh, nicotine, uh, excuse me, ni- uh. Nine electronic cigarettes that, you know, that is being regulated by them. By FDA at this point, but there's thousands and thousands of them on the market, I'm not sure. Uh, uh, in some cases, they don't even know what's inside these products. Uh, inside these vaping devices, so it's kind of scary to, you know, recognize and see that, you know. Uh, you know, there are, the tobacco companies are still finding ways to, you know, get new, uh, new users of their product. So that's just one of the things that I wanted to highlight as well. And then finally, uh, one of the things that I also, uh, did is, I included, uh. You know, just, uh, you know, just, uh, you know, the work that is going to be required from us moving forward. Just because of the fact that it just seems like everything that we're working on right now seems about, uh, just the future, what we're going to do and what we need to continue doing. And in this case, I included the, uh, on the, on the right side of the document. I've included a new brand that was given to us. It's from FDA, uh, the Food Drug Administration, and, and that, you know, it's called the Next Legend. The Next Legends, this is the second base of the Next Legend. This first base, uh, took place from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-four. And, you know, that, you know, more or less laid the foundation of the FDA's and, and their effort to, you know, uh, address, uh. You know, this, the highest of, uh. Electronic cigarettes and vaping devices in Indian country, including Navajo. So in that case, you know, we, they decided to more or less fund it. And, uh, here's the bad news. Uh, it was about two, two weeks ago that we were unemployed for one day. From the, uh, because of the FDA cuts that take place and RTI, the, the, the organization that we were working. Uh, we were very much laid off for one day, didn't have a job, and, you know. You know, I feel like, uh, maybe it was Robert, uh. Uh, Robert Kennedy Junior's visit here to Navajo that might have impacted the fact that they, he, they reached back in there and pulled back hours, and. They said this, this needs to continue to go forward, so. I feel like advocacy work even here at this council level might have really persuaded, uh, FDA to, you know. You know, even though they, they had slashed their funds, they took the grant back out and they allowed us to proceed, so. This, uh, uh, Next Legends Initiative is a two-year initiative, it's going to be two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-seven. So we're hoping that, you know, by doing this, we could begin to address some of the high, uh, vaping that is happening across Navajo. I recently visited Tuba City, uh, Unified School District and Tuba City Boarding School, and the initiation is even getting at that level. Uh, kids are bringing these devices to their, uh, schools as, uh, as young as junior high. And, you know, the, the kids are being, you know, they're being influenced, even at a lower grade level. The same thing was shared with me at Connecticut Unified School District and Wonder Rock County Unified School District, these are the areas that we work with. And, uh, as well as Chingli Unified School District, I sat down with Mr. Quincy Napek, uh, a few days ago, and that was the subject that we talked about, is the fact that, you know. There's a huge concern right now about parents and the schools about what they need to do to move in forward, so. I, I believe that this, uh, grant from FDA, the Next Legend, is something that we're really excited about. As I mentioned to Mr. Napek and his staff, including, uh, Dr. Paul Guy, that. Including, uh, a show of applause the other day at the Chingli Chaka meeting. Where they passed a resolution in an effort to support the work that we're doing. Uh, at that point, you know, they, they did recognize that, you know, uh, this is something that they've really been hoping for. As Chingli is even considering reclaiming their small communities, the college reclaiming Chingli. And the whole effort is, you know, what can we do to, you know, help in, uh, you know, developing new communities and helping communities, so. Uh, that's what we're here for. Uh, and, and then in the effort of doing that, you know, we've also had to identify chat members. As well as, you know, uh, individuals that can, you know, more or less, uh, being asked to participate. We're hoping to, um, recruit like five hundred kids. In that, uh, these kids, uh, could range between the ages of maybe. Twelve to all the way to college. And that's where we reached out to the college and NTU, they're going to be part of our partners, they're going, we're going to help, they're, they can help. They plan that would be, uh, something that we could all be proud of, they, you know, so that's something that we've included in this. And then the final document is this, this support letter. I included that and put it in the whole, all unit of folders. So these support letters will really come in handy at some point when we go before the Navajo Nation Human Research Review. Uh, at that point, we feel like, uh, that's where we feel like a lot of the guidance and how we're going to. Approach this, uh, Next Legends Initiative will come in handy. Yeah, I always say that you, you have the support letters that are very much required for those. So if you're interested in, uh, if you wanted to, you know, uh, provide that, uh, support letter, we're very much, we'll be appreciative of that, so. Uh, those are just some documents that I've included in this, uh, presentation, so. Uh, you know, it's a short presentation, we just wanted you to, uh, uh, get you updated on the work that we do. Uh, and that, uh, the work is being, uh, as I mentioned, the work is being recognized all the way across the world right now, and that. Uh, I feel like the acknowledgement of the work that is going to take over here, again, uh. It all contributes to all of us working together as a team and then collaborating freely, and I want to also say that, you know. Uh, and after this meeting, I'm going to Hard Rock. Uh, this evening, I'll be in Hard Rock again, and I'm really making a point to be a part of the community, I've been to Chingli, uh, Pinyon. As well as Chingli, and I'm planning on going into La Catuca in, uh, Shaly, and getting, getting more supporting documents, so. Uh, I see that, you know, just being in Hard Rock, Pinyon over the past week, it's very much, uh, grew on me. Uh, it really, I see the people that are out in the community, I ran with them on, uh, on Thursday, if you're ever in a jam, look. I wanted to mingle with them, I wanted to be, I wanted to see myself, uh, the people and the kids and what we're doing as a, as a nation, addressing the concerns that we do. Uh, this is, we're very much focused on tobacco. In that, you know, commercial tobacco, and how can we begin to, you know, change the narrative about our using our own traditional methods? And, uh, tomorrow, we're meeting with. Department of Health, Director of Director, General Yos, regarding that, uh, issue with, uh, Office of Traditional Cultural and Spiritual Healing. We did, uh, we did a strategic planning session with committee, uh, with these coalition. The Arizona Life Coalition did include, uh, MBDN, the, uh, Native American Church of North America, all the mostly, uh. You know, these regional, uh. Exist that are out there, these organizations, these traditional organizations, but we developed a strategic plan. How we, how they would like to proceed. And one, in one cases, uh, they sit down with the executive director and helping them identifying that individual that is going to be put in that office, so. There's, uh, those are some of the recommendations that we put together for that. And with the help of former, uh, Vice President, President, facilitated. These, uh, strategic planning sessions, we're hoping that, uh, that's going to be our discussion tomorrow. And helping, you know, uh, identify this individual that will be part of this new office, so. How we can be able to help the people that are out in the community. We asked that, we posed that question to us during, uh, two thousand and twenty, uh, two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, and we really felt like it was a meaning. Because out in the communities, I live, it, I, who, I was, uh, is that, you know, we have our own methods. We have our own first responders, and that's one of the things that we recognize is that when it comes to issues, uh, really close to home. But we, we tend to, you know, rely on our own, uh, before we even try to get others to, you know, address the concerns that we have, so. Uh, you know, I know that, you know, this, this office that we, that was created under the Department of Health is something that we feel. Is very much, uh, up to time, uh, for the legislature. Uh, Washington, uh, now, uh, now, so that to that, and it's the, the call. I feel like, uh, this is probably the best, you know. All the work that I've done over the past twenty years, uh, in advocating, you know, decreasing initiation. Reducing exposure to commercial tobacco and promoting quitting. The quitting is the one that I recognize that is very difficult. Because of the fact that, you know, there's methods that are out there, including, uh, sentencing programs that are being advertised, you know, from different partners and now. Including the Indian Health Services, that is very much, uh, it's very hard to get somebody to even enroll in that sense. But, you know, we have, we, we use the traditional methods in addressing, uh, how to address some of these, uh, naive in a sense. Is that, you know, these are, uh, methods that are proven toward. And in this case, I feel like the support that we receive during this passage of this new law will provide us. An opportunity to share this approach with our communities. And that, you know, that's something that I went, wanted to share, uh. I feel like I just went and, uh, shared just a little points of everything, including just some of the highlights of the work that we received over the past, uh. Uh, month, that, you know, I made it a really important part on my, on my part to, uh, really promote just that, uh. Uh, in the sense that it was a celebration on our end, that to get recognized and for the Navajo Nation to get recognized globally. In an effort to, you know, highlight just what kind of work is being done here on Navajo. I feel like it, I feel like it impacted, uh, the world, it's going to impact the world in such a way where. Where there's going to be more recognition to, uh, the Navajo Nation, so.
So with that, Mr. Nal. So with that, Mr. Nance, are you waiting the rest of the time?
Yes.
Alright, so with that, um. Committee members, can I get a motion? Motion, Honorable George Hill, second. Second. Honorable, and he, uh, uh. Committee member, are there any questions pertaining to the presentation? One once, one twice, Honorable Toll, uh, thank you, Chair, members. Uh, all the motions, I understand that. He's here, he's here.
Not a question, but just to let you know that at least in Navajo. Uh, Council Committee in, uh, June seventh, covering, uh, top. You could get hold of, uh, um. My, um, gentleman, Mr. Johnson, hey. Behead the chair. Uh, it could be on the general list. Uh, during the chapter, I mean, the, the government, I mean, that's, uh, never. We have the one, probably, to be on that, um. Okay, yeah, yeah.
Alright, so with that, thank you, Honorable Toll, and Mr. Nance, do you have, um, response, Honorable Toll?
With toll, I'm sorry, Honorable, I think we could, uh, attend that, because we're also being asked to attend an event in, uh, around that same time with, uh, six thirty eight. We'll make it a quick meeting.
John Johnson.
John Johnson.
Alright, thank you very much, again, uh, Honorable Toll, on the back, committee members, are there any additional questions, uh, comments? One once, two times, one, three times, with that, Honorable Yenita, how do you vote? To be, Honorable Toll.
Green.
Honorable Dr. N. Honorable Vice Chair.
Green.
Honorable Yenita again.
Green.
With that, we have five in favor, zero opposed, and chair not voting. Again, thank you very much, um, Mr. Nance, for giving your team, um, for getting that information out there. And it will all for myself, but hopefully it will work and we'll hear it better than you. So, maybe, so thank you very much, again. And so with that, uh, committee members, we move on to the open business, item number six, there is none. And moving on to the seven, the business. And we do have legislation number zero zero seven eight dash two five. We do have a sponsor here, uh, Delegate Curtis DeNito, with that, um. Committee members, we're going to give a motion. Motion made by Honorable Toll. One, we have a second. The second, uh, second made by Honorable Yenita again. So with that, committee members, are there any questions pertaining to legislation number zero, zero, definitely, that actually happened? Any questions, one, three times, with that, Honorable Yenita, how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable, uh, Toll, green, Honorable Dr. N. Uh, Honorable Vice Chair. Honorable Yenita again. Uh, so with that, we do have five in favor, there are approved. Chair, non-voting. Uh, so with that, that is for legislation number seventeen dash two five, actually relating to health, education, human services committee, the U F K committee. Rejoining that designated by travel organizations to Navajo Land and Interstate Home Department for additional period of four years for the purpose of. Contracting with the United States Indian Health Service, optimized within Navajo, and nursing home, and, uh, again, the, uh. Into Title One, South Indian Self-Determination Act PL nine new dash six thirty eight, amended. Contracts in Title Five, South Government's contract concerning to the Indian Self-Determination Act PL nine new dash six thirty eight, amended. That the patient, a private organization, be involved and, uh, continue compliance with all terms and conditions. So, congratulations, and thank you very much. And, uh, from Mr. Tom, yeah, and so this will, this legislation will move on to, uh, next. Committee, which is seven here, too. And, uh, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, and with that, thank you. So with that, moving on, we have, uh, the legislation number zero zero eight three dash two five. Mr. Nal, if we read, uh, this legislation very personally.
We had a court about. The proposed energy, or, uh, in Singapore, is, uh, the, uh, the, uh, so. Back to number zero zero, we got two, five, and ways to help the state and the service team out there. Unfortunately, I find that, uh, we, we're, I believe. National, uh, the, uh, where they, uh, they, uh, uh. Kind of, uh, this one here. That's, uh, not, is not a date, but clear, uh. Mr. Chair.
Uh, so with that, we have sponsor, uh, Honorable Mr. Tom, to, uh, with that. Uh, do we have sponsor, Delegate, uh, Casey Allen Johnson, Honorable sponsor, Delegate, Honorable Toll. One once. So. Um, yeah, so, sponsor.
There's no sponsor.
I wanted to do, uh, I wanted to, uh, amend your agenda, suspend the four rules to do a consent agenda on. Yeah, okay.
Um, so.
I wanted to do that before you start, this, we jumped on it.
Okay. Um, let me, let me. Okay, so, uh, Honorable Toll, motion, Honorable Toll, second. So with that, you want to do a motion to suspend the four rules.
Yes.
So then, let me recognize that then, since I have not called for a motion, of course.
Okay.
So with that, as a committee member, Honorable Yenita again, makes a motion to suspend the four rules, and that is to.
To do a consent agenda on B, legislation number zero zero eight three dash two five. C, legislation number zero zero eight four dash three five, and D. And B, legislation number zero zero eight seven dash two five.
Okay, so with that, many members, it has been a motion by one of your colleagues to do a consent agenda for new business item B, C, and D. Uh, B is legislation number zero zero eight three dash two five, C legislation number zero zero eight four dash two five. D is legislation number zero zero eight seven dash two five to do the consent agenda for those three items. Do you have a second, committee members? Going once.
Second, yes.
Second, um, made by Honorable, um, Vice Chair. Committee members, are there any question, um, regarding the motion in the second to suspend the four rule?
Chair.
Uh, Honorable Talk.
Thank you. Chair members, uh, busy to be here. All day. We go to their community. Really. We're not gonna do that to us. For us. So, uh, this this has to be here. We just then get a sponsor. Be here. So, you got me to do that. Is there a question? Some question. So, I pose a check.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Talk. With that, Honorable Dr. Nance.
Thank you, Chair. I just need clarification. So, the proposed motion right now, this is suspended four rules. Uh, I feel like one action first, and then consent. I mean, both, so if I could just get clarity on that. And then the other thing is also, um, my understanding work. And me, I'll be voting again, just because I feel like we just need to maintain that. Uh, I guess reputation on here, even even though they're not here, I get it. Even for myself, as a sponsor, I'm not able to make a committee, I always believe there are gonna be additional co-sponsors. So I do my reflection, uh, but it's me as myself. So I just need clarification on that. Motion, yes, and let's check. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Honorable Dr. Nance. So with that, um, sort of clarification, this is a motion in the second, just to suspend the four rule. And the reason, uh, this is provided to do a consent agenda, which will require a separate motion in the second if this is mentioned. So with that, Honorable, um, Vice Chair.
Well, I was gonna speak on, um, the other way to do what we just, if somebody wants to co-sponsor Casey Allen or Casey Allen's legislation, you could do that right now. I said I would, um, co-sponsor, I've been asked to co-sponsor through eight four dash two five, so I'm trying to do that, but I understand the stat part is set to look at, so hopefully, oh, there she goes. So that's the other way to do it.
Okay, so with that, um, I'm gonna go back to Honorable Minanet again to respond. Honorable Talk. Go back here, Honorable Dr. Nance.
I understand what you guys were saying. But, um, these are the doubts that are popping in this session too. And, um, I know. I'm making the. Because they're happening in other places. And we're just in time. Or maybe they they can't do that, maybe they're.
That's it. But it's just me.
And, um, thank you for that, Honorable Minanet again. So with that, I believe Honorable Vice Chair can just sign legislation number zero zero three four dash two five. And so with that, I will also sign legislation number zero zero eight three dash two five, just for just for the record. Um, so with that, there is a motion in the second to suspend the four rule. What should we come from there? And then, um, we decide to go forward. So with that, uh, are there any other questions regarding suspension of the four rules? Committee members? Going once, going twice, um, going three times. How do you vote, Honorable? Honorable Dr. Nance. Honorable Vice Chair.
Please.
Honorable Minanet again, please. Uh, with that, we have two in favor, three opposed, uh, and one not voting, and that is chair. So if that is the suspension of four rules, uh, failed, so we will go back to agenda. And that is moving on to item B, legislation number zero zero eight three, uh, dash two five. And so that, um. Well, item B, Vice Chair, can you take over together? You got eighty-four?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, it's a six. Okay, now.
We close.
So that, um, Vice Chair, I'll have you take over.
That.
Number zero zero eight three, that's five.
Oh, uh, committee members, we have a decision number eight three dash two five. Um.
Read it into my record.
Can you read it into record?
Um, that vice chair. This year, you have. The shorty is a. And it's the, um, chief of. Now, this is not a thirty three seven five, two five, seven, on the council delegate. Casey Allen. Co-sponsored by, uh, delegate, also, also co-sponsored by Zari. Fracking number is zero zero eight. Uh, through having been put in the doctor, the manual, you need to sue him. Quarter reason, the court finds it for the sky, the court hears. The legislation, you know, is on the NALO committee. And.
Thank you very much. And can I get a question or a question? But I'm. Motion, Dr. Minanet, can I get a reference? That's second, Mr. Yunito. And did we have any questions for the presenter? Um, should we need to have a question? So therefore, I'll give you twenty minutes delegate, Chair Vince James.
Uh, can I thank you for that, Vice Chair. Uh, then members of the Health Education Human Service Committee, uh, this is legislation here for performance of Doctor Manuel David Suey. Uh, to the Nationalization Technical University Board of Regents, you're admitting the fourth finance agency. And so with that, um, there, if you read in the, um, legislation, uh, you do have the confirming appointment information on page two, lines twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. And so with that, um, he did go through the process procedures. And so with that, moving on to exhibit A, uh, he does have his little information, uh, document, supporting document um, from Doctor Lou Nigram, um, uh, requesting for his representativeship to, uh, NALO Technical University. Then also another letter containing exhibit B, uh, which is regarding, uh, his appointment and confirmative commitment. And then we do have exhibit C, the legislation, which is the resident, uh, right to make, uh, Doctor Manuel Suey. Uh, in all the different areas that he has worked in his careers. And then we also have, um, uh, exhibit D, uh, which is, uh, the part of interior information of his sensitive information that being a travel member of the NALO Nation. So with that, that's the information, and I will go ahead and wait the rest of the time. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm questioning how much time you're using?
Eighteen minutes and twenty seconds.
Eighteen minutes, twenty seconds, and you wait the rest of your time?
Yes.
Okay. And they're waiting for us the time, and we will go ahead and go to questions, comments, and Mr. Yunito have a question.
Um, yeah. Chair James, uh, how long do you know this this individual personally, or?
Thank you, um, Mr. Yunito. That's enough. Any other questions for Mr. James, and not, I'll go ahead and go back to, uh, Chair James.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, but that, uh, Honorable Yunito, uh, personally, I don't know him, but just through working in after the public, through meeting settings, uh, I'll tell you about us. I learned that to be personal. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Chair James. Any other questions, committee members? I should not, okay, no other comments? No other comments? I'm questioning, let's take all day. And I'll wait as they proceed to Navi and maybe counsel to Navi. Navi, she, I'm I'm sure that hopefully they'll show up there, and then you have heard the question, that would be good. How about she, you can do your, uh, research on them between now and. It is, it will be. So with that, um, there are no other questions, going once, going twice. And committee members, if we could go ahead and proceed with a vote.
Honorable Chris Yunito, how do you vote?
Please.
Honorable Chris Yunito, please. Honorable George Tuck, how do you vote? Honorable George Tuck, please. Honorable Dr. Minanet, how do you vote? Honorable Dr. Minanet, please. Honorable. Ms. James, how do you vote?
Delegate James, please.
Uh, James, please. Honorable. Honorable Minanet again, votes green. Menace Vice Chair, you have five in favor, zero opposed. Vice Chair not voting.
Thank you, um, Ms. Thompson, and I'll go ahead and, uh, with that, uh, moves on to NALO, and I'll go ahead and give the gather back to Chair James.
Oh, yeah, thank you again, uh, Vice Chair, committee members, uh, for that. So we'll move on to the next one, um, which is, uh, legislation of new business, I can see. Legislation number zero zero eight three dash two five. Uh, we do have an updated, uh, sponsor, um, and that co-sponsored is Honorable Vice Chair David Silenson, sponsored by Delegate Sean Amquill. So with that, staff, if you can read, um, legislation of reserve, uh, dash two five into the record.
Yes, and I think Mr. James around the, to be reserve statement. Post standing here, this is the NALO Nation Council, third year, twenty twenty-five, introduced by Delegate Sean Amquill, and co-sponsored by Delegate Jermaine Finison. Track number zero zero eight four dash twenty-five, National AIDS and Health Services. And NALO Game Committee, uh, confirming the funding of the use of uh, terror, the mental health system, to the National Technical University Board of Regents representing Central A and C for extended term for years. Legislation is move on to the NALO Committee, uh, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, again, yeah, thank you very much, um, it's been all for that. My committee members, you have a motion in the second. Motion made by Honorable Chris Yunito, in the second. Second. Going once. Honorable Dr. Nance. Committee members, if there are any questions pertaining to legislation on reserve. Committee members. Going once, going twice, going three times. Honorable Yunito, how do you vote?
Please.
Honorable Talk.
Please.
Honorable Dr. Nance.
Please.
Honorable Vice Chair.
Please.
Honorable Minanet again. With that, five in favor, and one, uh, not voting, and that is chair. And this legislation will actually go to item B, I think. And that will go to item B, I think. And as it begin, the final authority. So with that, we'll move on to the next one. Item, uh, new business, item D, legislation on reserve. Two five. And with that, I'll give the gather back over to Vice Chair.
Uh, thank you for that, Chair. And we move on to the next legislation, if we could give that right into record.
Uh, Vice Chair. We have, for you, the. Now, we're reading the Health Education Human Service Committee, about the NALO, and we need to go on work. And, um, we need to go to the NALO Nation Council, and maybe the NALO. Legislation is move on to budget and funding.
Thank you very much. And with that, uh, can I get a motion? Um, if, uh, Dr. McGee has motion, and we have, um, Chair, um, both second, uh, those that have been, I don't think. Uh, we have questions, so go ahead, uh, Chair James, with your twenty minute presentation.
Uh, yeah, thank you, um, for for that, again, for the motioning party. I will settle. Uh, I appreciate that. And this legislation is forty minutes in regards to the NALO Nation minimum wage. And so with that, um, I just wanted to first say that the NALO, the current NALO minimum wage is seven dollars and twenty-five cents per hour. Um, and and that is corresponding to the federal minimum wage, which is also at seven dollars and twenty-five cents per hour. Um, so, um, that's why the nation is calling that minimum wage. Um, but, as you can see, um, state of Arizona effective of January first, twenty twenty-four. Arizona, the state of Arizona's minimum wage is fourteen dollars and thirty-five cents, um, per hour. And so, that's the state of Arizona. Now, if you start looking at, um, city of Blackstaff. As effective January first, twenty twenty-five, just recently, um, Blackstaff's minimum wage is seventeen dollars and eighty-five cents per hour for non-warders. And sixteen dollars and eighty-five cents per hour for tip workers. And so, they came with that, that just recently happened with the Blackstaff. So Blackstaff is currently paying seventeen dollars and eighty-five cents per hour for non-tip workers. And then, uh, for the state of New Mexico, uh, as of January first, twenty twenty-five, New Mexico's minimum wage is twelve dollars and sixty-five cents per hour. Um, but in twenty nineteen, by state legislation, the minimum wage increased uh, in twenty twenty-two to eleven dollars and fifty cents, and in twenty twenty-three to twelve dollars. Um, but as of now, their current, the New Mexico's current minimum wage is twelve dollars and sixty-five cents. And so, if, uh, if, um, that's. Now, now, for the state of Utah, I thought that of January first, twenty twenty-five, um, state of Utah's minimum wage is seven dollars and twenty-five cents, um, per hour. Um, and then for the state of Colorado, as of January first, twenty twenty-five, Colorado's minimum wage is fourteen dollars and eighty-one cents per hour. Um, so but for us and all, with all the surrounding states that we. But for the other, when all the surrounding states that we uh deal with and that we currently work with, um it it seems that it is proper to try to get to um that same minimum wage just for the national government uh employees. And this is just national government employees, uh A A, uh we need executive branch or legislative branch or traditional branch. Uh A A, nothing, nothing beyond that. So if there's small businesses that are out there outside of the national government, out of these three branches, um A A would would not be forced to that. Uh at this time, um until further discussion has been made, uh because there was a couple of small businesses that have come out and and said, you know, um they think that this is the wage here. This um current dollar and the the way our feasibility studies are going and the amount of people that we have has sort of hurt their business, still not like a. But we'll continue to look into that and eventually when we come to a good uh solution for them, then we'll go ahead and drop, let all drop legislation in that trying to move forward with that minimum wage as well. But again, if this is more uh national nation government employees, uh A A, but additional. Don't want to shout them there. But uh A A not source, but A A don't not not really source. Don't make source of the bottom of the table, but actually don't speak on it. Again, and I'm going to wait the rest of my time, thank you.
Yeah, and Chair James, and how much time?
Fifteen minutes, twenty six seconds.
Fifteen minutes, twenty six seconds and you wait the rest of your time. Uh go ahead, I'm going to go, uh Dr. Andy Ness, we'll go to Dr. Andy Ness first and then we'll go to the Mr. Nito.
I think, I can't, not, not just that, for the notification, also for legislation. The A A our cases, I mean, the court of legislation, I just have a total very much question. About the D and G, um the enactment of this since October twenty twenty five. And so I know we're going to be entertaining this in a mix of possibly adopting these new figures what over in budget season. So can you just provide my little context and help me understand? When these are given, then. Which meaning that we, as well as given to them, these. They go up, they work with their budget committees. At the same time, we are moving along continuously your budget session. And then let's say it passes during some session. And then I'm just thinking about what are some of the effects and on what we. I should say the part of the education. Then those A A passes, if you pass the summer session, then I guess I'm just trying to understand that we're not going to end up over this year. I don't, I should provide, like, very well, over even the passing, even it's of budget season. Then we have to go back. If they have to change things around, but again, just clearing on that part. And then the other thing that we mentioned, non. Representative entities, um and I think you can just provide the timeline then on where for those non-entities, is how far these will extend would be. Uh because I'm also thinking about our prices as well. So those are mainly issues of verification, um I'll just remind that we have a budget season. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And let's go ahead and go on to Mr. Tull.
Well, thank you. Thank you, uh Chair. The only question I have is when this is approved. These students can use this. Because uh let's say there's some who not officially. Uh have spent in using for seven dollars. She, anyway, so when this is approved, then our minimum wage is that that. You can not simply, you can start using also P E P. What we have is. After that, it is not quite. Although it is attractive. Maybe I can support it this year. It yeah, okay.
Uh thank you, Mr. Paul. Now, can you give now go ahead and turn it back over to Chair James for responses?
Uh yeah, now, thank you very much um for that. So letting start, but not a little bit tall. First, uh summer youth and P E P workers, um since it's still going through the process, it won't be for this summer. Twenty twenty five. And uh if it's approved, then I'm beginning to understand your fiscal year twenty six. Um and that's where the chapter will also need to make those adjustments within your judges. For all summer youth, P E P workers, temporary workers, uh on board that, but that that's only if it gets approved this year. And so that will reflect not until next year, next year's summer on that. And then um in regards to the on both Dr. Andy Ness, um in regards to um being effective of October first, twenty twenty five, that is my goal is to see what kind of answer we can give for during summer session. Um on on how to move forward in working with the programs. Um and so hopefully if I can get this legislation into summer council, that will give us a lot of um insight on how budgets need to be adjusted um within each of the branches throughout the nation. Um so uh it all depends on how far the legislation goes, but but again, um as as you can see, we'll need to go through budget finance, non-ordered committee and Navi K I P committee and then Navi council and then of course the ten days uh by present. So um and eventually, it it's good that we're doing it now uh to see what we get with it, um and how far we get with it um to council. Um so this isn't a matter of going through the process and hopefully it does get approved in the during summer, so that will help us through this whole budget season and help programs and departments and divisions to make those adjustments within their budget. Uh that they will be presenting in the change in community and um Navi K I P and council. So again. Um next one, um again, I wish I could give you a timeframe, but um right now, um the feasibility studies have not really um hasn't been fully completed to what I could say it's at least percent completed or anything like that. But um it basically started the conversation and at least um we're giving that information um set in place to to move things forward and and to sort of. It. So I don't remember when I got this legislation. Uh I think it was almost two years ago, the legislation, it's it's taking that long. Um so it didn't look that, what the record should be, but it's actually been. Um so A A, Shaba, Shaba, I'm not familiar with it. It took um some time to get this legislation um drafted and so and that was on February sixth, twenty twenty three, this one dropped. Um so it's it's been this long uh for to finally get this far, so A A come back home. So um A A Shaba, I'm not familiar with it. Um she, uh, thank you.
Thank you for that. And we have all questions from Dr. Andy Ness.
Yes, uh I was. Maybe, but well, maybe I think maybe each other. So if I know, can work, I mean, but I can't see that is to just. The big lot, but it's, it was all kind of interesting, there can work, there's not too much. But around it, it has been, we're speaking and it's just. Uh should just be aware, this is just a suggestion to keep in mind that this may pass in the next of um session. Because then we start our session here on June sixteenth. So and again, a month later, this is a session. So again, it's more to, uh that transition, it may have been passed in. Uh then we have to, I realize it's insane, leaving here instead of here, so. Just stating that, so to you, uh, they should.
Thank you for that, Dr. Andy Ness. Touch none. Any other questions? We have Nito. Uh with the handout, we'll go ahead and do the beginning test.
Okay, thank you for. But sure. Um. You all ready? Um I have a question, let me say that you introduced the legislation back in twenty twenty. Um this uh has a number on it here in this legislation here. You can just do enforcement if it goes along with. Like this, I'm still learning, so can you explain that to me? A uh my first question, well, my second question will be um this uh federal minimum wages, the Utah area, they're on with. It is Beijing. Um yeah, there's a laws, seven twenty five, yeah, you've got. And you know, they go by the minimum wages. I don't, I guess it's been passed by the proclamation of Arizona. Um I live out, I'm sorry, you know, there's a, they always. It seemed that the state always be attention to the federal government, how they uh either um executive or. Yeah, the. Shouldn't have that. Uh my third question will be, um you said this is for the. Where before you pointed it. That means that we're going to use the uh the general ones, this. Uh for the grade scale. The uh those few questions, yeah, Vice Chair.
So thank you for that. And if there are any other hands, I'll probably give it back to uh Chair James for response.
Okay, thank you. For you, Nito. Um yes, I did draw the legislation again, I can see it February sixth, twenty twenty three. Um and so ever since then, it's been in the process for a legal review. And so finally, as uh May first, twenty twenty five, that you see on the legislative summary sheet, that's when I finally got um this legislation um to to be dropped. And so um again, this resolution, legislation is to establish a minimum wage for the national government employees. Um and that will be effective as of October first, twenty twenty five. Because our new fiscal year, the national nation begins October first. Um and our the current fiscal year that we are on were already in third quarter. Um so fourth quarter, not that's equal, which ends uh September thirty, although new new budget vision, that's. So um so A A, and now um we have this legislation corresponding to October first, uh twenty twenty five. Um but with that, um this um wide and similar appreciation to legal counsel, this Kansas French, uh for for working on this legislation. Um and then also for again, um administration, um by one of the former attorney, uh Laura Nina Capone, who re- retired from legal or legal council office. And so they would talk, it's bringing it to this point, uh uh you can like, they're necessary for. So that supports that. And then um yeah, I I I know Utah is not that minimum wage and and so that's what the Utah legislators and the governor decided to put in place, and that's their their minimum wage, like, they are, so they. It's not a good one. But here, for the national nation, if it was how nation, you knew on here, not in Colorado, right here, in the. With the never, in Colorado, it's not even much efficiency in this case, so when all the other um studies that were done with the other states uh and their wages. Uh I think this is more feasible uh dollar amount for our national nation. And and for me, I just see that our national nation employees should be making more twenty dollars a month. That should be the minimum wage. That's the same, but you know, with the studies that are have been done with our neighboring states and our current state and and other cities and border town, um it it's the the studies that have found us to this point. And and the reason why I say that minimum wage without formation government should start twenty dollars is because if you look at the percentage of the national nation employee, a lot of our national nation employees travel at least, at least um over thirty minutes just to get to their works. Um we do have a small percentage or so, only takes them five minutes to ten minutes to get to their work site. And a very small percentage, very small percentage, to what we have employees that walk to their work. Um again, um if you look at all the other cities throughout the country, a lot of their employees are able to walk to their work site within five, ten minutes. And and they're making above the current minimum wage that they are recommending, that we are recommending for the national nation government. And so A A can come together, if you do those um analogy, bigger data, it makes a lot of sense. She, a lot of this is crazy. Now, now, yeah, taking a total, total, actually, but I don't know, actually. A lot of our employees travel on um their roads that are not maintained on an everyday basis, uh and and there was wear and tear and so it it gets very interesting or typical. So, sure, not changing, the way we I got, we got to install it now was again based off the settings that have been done in our state and in the neighboring state. A A, but now not think of it, so I'll be um. Right, uh, comments, still, like, Vice Chair, thank you.
I'm watching, yeah, and then we have Shaden, the leader of the day, with a question and comments, I hope, which is I'm not going to take any more follow over, any more questions. So I believe we have one more common question from the senior as well. Oh, yeah, same, go, go, go. Um yeah, we hopefully this legislation, this official is um been overdue for so long. And um fifteen hours, fifteen dollars an hour is only for minimum wage for our national nation. Um it's it's a job, oh. I've raised it, every year I've raised it down, you know, and that's finish. Oh, that's a, um, you know, it did, this would be really helpful for the ones of like its drivers, or it's a lady on that, we shouldn't, we don't make that much. And um and here some of some of the staff, whether the hospital all gave direct directive orders and things like that, they make a lot of money, they such a, they need the cost. For part of the program, for part of the. For a late hour program, to to get their own wage, so I'm concerned that their um uh support in the Delta for Arizona. Um for their um Delta should based on things of state then, they okay, either way, the person bought any of it. I can get more support on it, so they can get their own, their own um um adjustment. In some of this case, I go, I started off on that. Didn't really work on it yet, so, but I'm just waiting for the help. Help director to be, uh, confirmed. Go on that. This is kind of holding up my. My, too. So, um. The whole, the whole need to really go with the state, the states that are. Will be reversed, but somebody has to, um, be the middle person, have to pay for them to. The pay up or set or, uh, uh, I I see, um. Uh, they're just not at eight, fifteen hour or nine dollars a day. They do a lot of work for our programs. And, um, and and super native head start and, um. And and, um. Your eight hundred, uh, budget, a hundred, so. So budget, we didn't, we just. Also, you're speaking for the, uh, funding aspect. So again, I mean, if we go, we give them, if we increase the the minimum wage, you know, we have to go outside. It's something for funding, if our budget is on in. A machine to be. Later, uh, then we have to stop paying out people to give them minimum wage, should turn up and. So, um. A, it was a disappointment, well, without signal then again. My question, can I, I'll give maybe, uh, to Chair James for your comment? Please continue. You can go. No.
Alright, so, um, thank you again, my pleasure, and also, um. Unwelcome, you know, as again, uh, I do really agree with you. Fifteen dollars an hour, um. We we did, we did talk about that, but again, based on the studies that we've done. Uh, like Colorado, fourteen eighty one, Utah being at seventeen dollars, plus seventy five cents. Uh, New Mexico being at twelve dollars and sixty five cents. And for fact, that being at seventeen dollars and eighty five. Uh, then State of Nevada being at fourteen dollars and thirty five per hour in total. Waging at seven dollars and twenty five cents. With the fourteen, how we got to the fourteen dollars and seventy one cents, uh, was we also looking to complain that employee benefits. Uh, for regulars that employees, and so that's how we got that. Figure it's fourteen dollars and seventy cents, uh, as the minimum wage of the navalations. And I know that, uh, there there are different concessions that are done to where. Like McDonald's, Burger King, Chobol, all those areas, they, 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 they paid about twenty dollars an hour. Uh, to their employees, but again, we did. Have a session as well. It's more, you know, but they don't get the, the excellent employee benefits. Navalation has a place for regulars that employees, um, that receive that employee benefit. That was taken into consideration, so that's only a fourteen dollars and seventy cents, uh, per hour. To make a minimum wage for the navalation, um, so. They gave me that, um, so, um, that, this fourteen dollars and seventy. Per hour, minimum wage. Be, uh, for temporary employees that are paid on hourly base, uh, and and again, like. So, they didn't want that, so, uh, they not have, not have seen that, they.
So, uh, thank you for that, Chair James. Uh, I'll go, uh, I'm not okay, if we have any more questions, how many time? Legislation you for me here, like one, one and twice. And, uh, we'll begin to proceed with it. I'm all in, and it's the gay, how do you vote?
Three.
I'm all against James, how do you vote?
Don't be James, okay.
Uh, Dr. Anina, how do you vote?
Three.
Uh, George, how do you vote?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, well, Curtis, you need to, how do you vote?
Three.
Men in West chair, you have five members voting in favor, zero opposed, West chair not voting. Thank you for that. And with that legislative pass of this committee, he goes on to do Navi and final process. Navalation council. Congratulations, Mr. Vince James. Again, I'm sure there's a lot of employees up there. And we're going to be looking forward to this and excited for this. Uh, pushing, and I'll hand the devil back over to Chair James.
Uh, again, thank you again, um, real quickly, committee members, thank you for voting on the legislation. And line of legislation, another two legislation, again, thank you very much for all the legislation passing here. At Health Education, Human Service Committee. So with that, we wanted to. New business, I think E, and that is the schedule proposed, follow up date, um, on HESI. To do a work session, now I'm in, but. So I apologize, no one's here or done for the head to work session, so I'm assuming that's what you expect there, the. Um, now go ahead to that work session to, um, find some more dates to complete the work session. Um, uh, I'm not sure, so if if I can get some clarification on that. That or committee members, I'll go back to that.
Yeah, please be sure. So, on this one, uh, it was at the request, uh, Dr. Draxi, upon a. Eighty four. Start, um, just thinking there are additional questions. Uh, I know there was a quite a few question and updates provided from, um. Not only the committee, but from HESI. So it was at the request to do a follow up. I don't anticipate it going all day, um, but I think just the, um. It might be suggested by Dr.. Or they would just. Yeah. And.
So, committee members, do you guys wanna set a date, or do you guys just recommend, uh, one more option there? So it's literally just, I can't remember four, has the committee, can you do a next report? What you mean? Have a do a next report? Are you all agreeable for them just to do a, a report, not schedule a work session, honorable question?
Um, I I now that I'm thinking about it, when we had our session with HESI. We, um, wanted to entertain possible funding for this, or HESI. Proper assessments and repairs for their building, as well as their, um, cultural. Remember the education funds, which on all points should build bond with only like thirty six thousand dollars that we give them. So we were, I think we were, we wanted to try to assist in giving them maybe more funds in this coming budget season. So maybe, I don't know if it's proper, I I don't know that. We should properly address as a report, but maybe just go back to work session. Adrian.
Okay, so do you guys wanna work session, what dates are you guys, uh? Uh, Chair, I'm unable to, uh, believe what was session.
Information will be written, okay, yeah. So. Wait, I wish could have data.
Of the ninth and their test.
That's who we have. Um.
Yeah, relation.
Yeah. Probably here, but there be, so. But now we have dinner.
Yes.
Alright. Then June that, relation, where do you want?
June. How many? Um, this is Peter.
Jesus.
Oh, it's a returning deal, the end of the nation. It was seven eight, no, no, it's in the week. He made twenty.
A lot of. Do you need?
I think it's twenty eight. It's the day right after twenty one on tuition, C I D number ten.
Yeah.
So you can come back twenty eight, maybe one to five. I won't make it this, fall next week. Despite. I'm doing a key on the creativity.
Thank you.
June second, shouldn't you know? Um, I just think of my chapter, signing meetings to.
Okay.
You should want to. Hey.
Well, uh, yeah. Just making a report on me.
On the ninth.
Yes, on the ninth.
I can put it back to the recording on the agenda on the night. Do we have a big agenda?
Yeah, we have the document.
On the night. George's.
So the ninth, as you reported, yes.
Half of. Time.
Yeah.
She.
You have the line for the following committee. You missed the sixteen.
He might go back on my standpoint, universal graduation. Considering your budget season.
Yeah.
One question about your acquisition, your travel.
See, if you want to get a point, see.
Ahead to eight, the night with the. You have.
Yeah.
So you guys wanna do the sixteen then, as a report?
Yeah.
Now, go ahead, start.
Not all.
Not the ninth, uh, June sixteen.
Yeah.
June sixteen, come down, it'll be given as such.
And it's gonna be reported.
As a report.
Follow up.
Follow up.
Although, um, we can get, so, Dr. Anina, so then we have to entertain budgets, that's the way to.
Sure, well, that that's what it says.
That's sure.
Yeah. They're going to say. As a gift.
The reasons.
Yeah.
And then we'll do budget.
Yeah, that's about the schedule, but I'm sure.
Yeah, we have that, um. The eighteen task group.
That's on the eighteen.
Nineteen and twenty. And into you that they change. But this we can't do.
I'll go, check, yeah. Rema, do, oh. I was proposing to them on sixteen, June day.
Check. We also, I really also want to visit not this time. Some school way up there.
But they they wanted to visit students out there.
Yeah. Very, very, yes. Three, three, that's four. And one, two, six, thirty eight program.
Okay. I'm I'm just thinking about the administration schedule. For all administration. Recertified. The label, not the song. Administration side.
For an asylum.
Yeah.
I believe that.
Yeah. Then it's on school, some of the administration, not for you.
But we'll go reach. We can.
I think it's good that we're checking, it's reasonable. The four editors are probably. Or renew, or this. So, again.
I'll check it then. As I stated, not renew the administration. And then the, uh, the rest. It's intense, I'm going to just enhance. I think I'm. Supposed to solve the problem. It is.
So you can just put that on our agenda. Maybe for next, have the meeting. That's what it is.
Never mind.
Then I can learn, um. What do you guys, upon my June second?
Second.
The the. Not and not so strong, just fall back to us, how the administrative, whoever. That if you can schedule the. You guys want the, the Monday on June second? Between that and the. Or range of nonsense. Yeah. Maybe by June second. That would. Sometimes with very much.
And we have renewal, is it sure, uh, the renewal will be through, um, Harrison, now he's out there.
Or the, honorable soul and honorable vice chair. Those are the materials that are the question. Have them be in access. This is.
Richville.
A, I don't know, um, honorable soul, but it don't, it won't get. Uh, Mr. Knowle.
Not during the graduation. There are different visitors during the graduation, but I think that's what I'm, that's always talking about. When they start graduation, they have two graduations. Off and.
So, what you can't have a meeting there, because it's not a reservation. But we can.
Well, they just want you guys to see.
We can do a work session, leadership meeting.
Yeah. Well, they. It, um, not during the graduation, because they're they're busy during the graduation. They have kids graduating, they have people loading up their vehicles, going home, and so. It's just a chaos. It's best to do it there. I'm talking, okay? So, um, so, um, but that. So, um, A. Uh, because, um, they want you guys to see, but the kids are further house. Than the school here. You guys to see the. But they're not working to purchase, we're like there. So.
So what is known, you know, part of the.
Me, school and children.
Get back. Things that will.
So I I I miss her information, so she can go with. Sure. Right, right, okay. Um, pass me the. Can you, um, pass me the community that they're staying with? That the leadership leading in there, being with. Their. For that.
Um, yeah, if you can find out when this one school in. Will be for Richville. And then before that. That you can contact a bridge girl. Um, maybe ask to see if we can do a leadership meeting through Zoom. With them to to get that information, give those information.
Okay, as part as in, like a hybrid meeting?
Yeah. And then to maybe figure out some dates. Alright, so that's that, so you will get back with. Now, I've got. Uh, when anybody would recommend, um. We need to be conducted, HESI need to be conducted, the school site, same for me. Just get back to Mr. Knowle by June second. India, in the local area, on the agenda, to find a. Um, so finally, we can have this. India, um, so. So with that. Uh, it was recommended, uh, to do next next follow up report on June sixteen. So I really don't need, you want me to hear motion in a second, or this is gonna be on a regular agenda. For follow up work session, when I start on June sixteen, Mr. Knowle. You still want a motion, okay?
Yeah, that was. Yeah, that was for.
Thank you, Mr. Noll. So with that, committee members, can I get a motion? Uh, motion made by honorable top and the minutes. Um, second. Uh, honorable George Hope, and this is to have, um. It's now to be excited to follow up report on June sixteen. Regular meeting instead of scheduling a separate work session. As a follow up. So with that, are there any questions? When once, when twice, retired, honorable who you tell?
Green.
Honorable tall, green, honorable doctor, yes.
Green.
Honorable vice chair?
Green.
Honorable who you know, okay? So with that, we have five in favor, uh, zero opposed and chair not voting. So with that, we move on to item number, uh, item F under new business. And that is scheduled meeting and requested by the Navy College. Uh, again, um, select recommended meeting dates. Committee members, what date is available to the. College?
We put him on a, a committee meeting, regular committee meeting. Like a nineteen or sixteen or twenty there.
I'm talking. Work session.
Did you want a session or do you just want meeting or a report?
Miss Noll?
Mr. Chair, if you request through, um, it's not to give a report. And I, I believe it, um. You need to be, uh, the four, the fire experience on campus.
Sixteen.
And, um, Karen Francis on the one, Mr. Chair.
Um, Mr. Francis. Just on Karen Francis.
Uh, yeah, it's a chair, James. This is Karen Francis. Can you hear me?
Oh, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, good morning, uh, honorable members of the Health, Education and Human Services Committee. I did send a, uh, letter on May twelfth requesting for a meeting or work session. Uh, so that we can, uh, let you know about the impacts of the fire. The vacancies on the Board of Regents, um, and some of our, uh, issues with, uh, infrastructure. And, um, our budget. So, um, either a meeting or a work session. Um, would, would be, uh, amenable to us. And, um, having it here on campus, we could host you. Or if it works better for you all, we could, um, go down to Window Rock as well. So, um, the only thing that I am requesting is not to schedule it the week of June ninth. Because our acting president is not going to be here that week. And she does, uh, want to address you all. Thank you, Chair.
What were the four again, Francis?
Uh, the, the issues we wanted to discuss with you?
Yeah.
Okay, the im-. The impact of the recent fire, the vacancies on the Board of Regents. And then infrastructure and budgetary concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. But, uh. Committee members. Not during the week of July. About seventeen.
Run fine seventeen.
Uh.
To go to the Navy College?
Yeah.
Meeting on Sunday, that is. Nothing. Nothing.
Can we just have the?
Meeting at the Navy College?
Can we just have a May, June twenty third at the Navy College?
Mm-hmm.
June twenty third at the Navy College? Any of the Navy College can say to them? May, June, June twenty third. Twenty three? June twenty third. I'll be, I get a motion then? Motion made by honorable vice chair, second. Honorable, um. First, you know? So with that. Have a meeting with the Navy College. Have a testing meeting at the Navy College, that they're hosting. Our regular testing meeting at the Navy College, basically on June twenty third. Tending. Tending. So with that, how do you vote on we need to?
Green.
Honorable tall? Honorable doctor, yes. Honorable leader, yes. So with that, we have five in favor.
That's me.
Uh, honorable vice chair. Uh, also, I, honorable vice chair. Uh, so with that, we get a five in favor, zero opposed and two not voting. Um. So with that, we'll move on to the next items. Uh, Mr. Noll?
Yes, um, Mr. Chair, the application of these are free. Uh, Mr. Donovan Pete also has requested. He, he's with the Navination Library. Um, and he's requesting to be played on a weekend, uh, and we could do that for Thursday, Thursday and the twenty second. Uh, that should even have a eight AM, uh, before the Navination.
Right.
And also the other request. Many is from, um, if you, um, there was a day, and they were. And we want, uh, I understand.
Well, we can't do it on the night. We really have. What's the election? Would it be nice to have our meeting? Into you. We can't fight again, but. During nine, we were already scheduled. Yeah, this. So we can probably just. The big of time to the Navy College on the twenty third, too.
Yeah.
At the Navy College.
I didn't know that. Also, you know. Come from.
Four. During my. During my testing. It's not be wasted on time because of the elections.
We can't really.
But, Mr. Chair, I'm. Um, the college, that we involve in. Um, digital, we will begin that in the team.
Alright, so with that, we remember tonight is, uh. A motion. I'll submit my honorable on George Hope. Second by honorable vice chair. And so with that, how do you vote, my role, legal?
Pretty.
Honorable tall, Chris, honorable doctor, yes. Uh, leader, yes. Honorable vice chair. So with that, we have five in favor, the different votes. And then Karen not voting. Okay, so with that, uh, let's move on. Next item, which is Jean, Richville. Uh, travel requests. They will be made twenty second, uh, graduation date, May twenty third, and travel back will be made twenty second. So with that, committee members, you have a motion. Motion made by honorable on George Hope. Uh, July second.
You say my time?
Second. Second for travel day request. To Richville? Second, requests, second motion, anybody for a third? Nobody?
Travel to Richville.
So no second?
Rich. Second.
Second, maybe by honorable leader, yes. And that is for Richville's graduation. Which is on May twenty third, and your travel day will be in May twenty second. Then travel day will back will be on May twenty fourth. And motion made by honorable tall, um, second by honorable leader, yes. Committee members, are there any questions pertaining to this travel request? I will not be attending, so I have, cannot have the graduation on May twenty fifth. And promotion on May twenty third. So I will be attending. I believe, um, vice chair is unavailable to. And, uh, honorable doctor, yes, unavailable as well. And I don't know. Ten last year. Okay, so. Honorable. Leader, yes, and then honorable tall, they are attending. So, any of them. So with that. Are there any other questions? If not, honorable leader, yes, have you vote? Honorable vice chair?
Green.
Honorable doctor, yes. Honorable tall, green. Honorable, pretty, sweet, green. With that, we have five in favor, zero opposed and chair not voting. Next one, uh, last item on the agenda that was added. On, I think, H, uh, a work session scheduled. Now foundation veterans advisory on town hall. So with that, they seem to want they. On, they seem to want to be with us. Committee members? Okay. On she would date. About to.
We're right here or?
It's only seven. Then we'll just go on to the.
Yes. Going inside the C I D competition and helping.
They have more.
We, you, the jury, Gina, what?
What we call?
Gina, Gina, Gina. Gina, Gina. Seventeen. What are we trying to do? The veterans.
You know? Yeah.
The third since we don't have a meeting on Monday. Um, I'm gonna be in, um. Yeah, we're urgency on that day. But we just can do it.
Seventeen, John. Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, nineteen.
We lost the.
Sixteen, yeah, it's the nineteen. Do you want to? The nineteen.
Eighteen, nineteen, and. But I think eighteen is, uh, that one's prevention of the. One day gathering.
Yeah.
And then, um, the other two are actually meetings and.
So, you okay, this is the eighteen or? How?
Eighteen. Eighteen.
What time? Then you should hope it.
You're trying to.
You guess me now? Yeah.
Ninety twelve.
Ninety twelve. Sir. Location? Yeah. T B A. T B A, Wondor? Yeah.
On what day?
Uh, June eighteen.
Maybe at the photo, under the. Yeah. Yes. Uh, we can either be at the N B A office. Or. Conference room in, um, what do I know? South Conference Room? Which conference room? I don't know which. Oh, maybe the south. Can you remember that?
So that will be at nine AM to twelve. And location will be T B A, Wondor, I think. Alright, so with that, uh, committee members, I have a motion. Motion made by honorable, um, George Hope and second by honorable doctor, yes. And that will be, uh, foundation veterans advisory council work session, nine AM to noon. On twelve PM, location T B A, um, the same, he will be Wondor. So with that, how do you vote, honorable, you need to, we, honorable tall, we need to, honorable doctor, yes. Honorable vice chair?
Green.
Honorable leader, yes. With that, we have five in favor, zero opposed and chair not voting. Alright, so that does complete our new business. And so with that, we move on to page from the meeting announcement and adjournment. Uh, committee members, are you any other announcements? None, one time. Uh, on, um, the.
Almost, I'm not gonna be there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the help of the. Good morning, I called, um, in sixty, um, the. And the, um, amount that, uh, the big budget that. Is, um, one hundred thousand and fifty. Um, we'll be back, we'll, I believe that. The veto. We that there, um, vetoed, um, of all the things that is particularly traveling. So, but it is, um, that it needs to come. And it's going to be, um, weeks and travels and improvements for the amount of forty three thousand and six hundred and seventy.
Okay, we're gonna go in on our next agenda.
Um, why are you, uh, uh, situation? Um. And I did email and see all committee members. Um, there, there needs to be a change, um, I can, I can, I'm not gonna be here, um, um, it's gonna be very. So I'm going to, and substitute for me. But, um. If you could, we're going to budget, and, but all I did was, uh, I was putting, if I double the travel. But. And then, if they're never. I would do it, but I'm not doing it. The, you like, um, we can come, show, but it's, I'm hesitant to allow that.
Okay. So, okay, so that's the announcement, and I believe vice chair, the chief, with the first meeting?
Yeah, I would prefer.
So that's the other announcement, so. Everything, meaning that.
And not leaving.
Not passing the.
Oh, I would be there, I would. I mean, all of them, I would be there.
But with a test, maybe, then the.
Oh, no.
Yeah. So, uh, honorable, you know, honorable tall, honorable doctor, myself. Obviously, that's for, for Thursday, meeting, I think.
Yeah, we'll, we're barely being formed, I think. So. We have. Do you want to go ready? Or, since what?
Okay. Right, and then, uh, honorable doctor, yes, is leaving about nine forty AM on Thursday. We'll just try and get started right at eight. And that will be at that time, um, Thursday, it's coming, this one Thursday, it is.
Here.
Here. Here, uh, budget final. Here. Yeah, eight, eight AM, we start. Uh, I guess this thing, the doctor, is really like nine forty, to be nine forty. I think, I think that's the goal is, of, which one? Yeah, it could be a promotion. So with that, uh, there's another announcement. Uh, May twenty second, eight AM, again, this coming Thursday is our special meeting. Uh, May twenty-second, eight AM, again, this coming Thursday is our special meeting and root of the regular meeting on May twenty-sixth. It'll be in Budget Finance Conference Room. June ninth, ten AM to one PM, it's Hesse's regular meeting, um, Budget Finance. On June ninth. One PM to four PM, it's Hesse's work session with National Elections Administration Office in Budget Finance Conference Room. On June sixteen, ten AM, Hesse's regular meeting, Budget Finance Conference Room. June twenty-third, ten AM, Hesse's regular meeting, Budget, Budget, Budget Finance Conference Room. Um, but for the twenty-third. How it's been confirmed, um. It was recommended to have our Hesse meeting at the Navy College, that's for June twenty-third. Um, meeting, and then, June sixteen will be here. Uh, in Wonder Rock. With, uh, National Work Side through their follow-up report. Be going to the work session, um, sixteen, June sixteen. Honorable, on, uh, June eighteenth, eight now, we have the National Coalition Veterans Advisory Council work session. Nine AM to twelve PM, location to also be determined, uh, somewhere in Wonder Rock. Uh, Richfield's, uh, travel requests. Um, graduation is May twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Uh, Gennaro. Promotion and high school is on May twenty-third, promotion at ten AM, graduation at fifteen. And then. Intu will provide a report. At, which will be at the Navy College on May twenty-third. So those are the announcements. Um, okay, so with that. Uh, committee members, can I get a motion to adjourn? Chair. Uh, Honorable Hope? Uh, an update, do you guys have any announcements?
We don't, we don't have an announcement right now, but we want to sit down with you to do that, um, possible meetings. With, um, regarding the compensation study as well as the personnel policies manual.
So we can do that after we adjourn?
Yeah.
So, after adjourn, okay. Alright, so with that, you have a motion to, to adjourn?
Motion.
Uh, motion made by Honorable, um, Vice Chair, remaining Simon, Simonton, um. Second by Curtis, uh, Yunita. And adjournment at twelve oh two. PM. Any questions on adjournment at twelve oh two PM? Once, twice, three times, Honorable, you know, how do you vote?
Three.
Honorable, three, Honorable Doctor, yes. Honorable Vice Chair?
Three.
Honorable Leader, yes. With that, you have five in there, zero opposed and chair not voting. Five, anyone, we are good by here at twelve oh two PM. Thank you, the committee members, that, secret, that, veteran. And then all those who are in the committee source. They can't, they don't, they don't have time. Thank you very much, have a good day, I'm on it. What is all the? Party, Mr. Noll?